Please rise if you wish for the invocation and the pledge. Dear God, we give thanks that the hurricane season did not have direct effects on our city this year while remembering that there were flooding events from other rains in parts of our county. We ask for continued guidance on how we best protect our city from the effects of heavy rain occurrences, including how we might keep some land undeveloped to provide the absorption that keeps our inhabited properties from harm. As we consider the matters before us this evening, grant us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that we may make the best decisions for those who have entrusted us to represent them. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the regular city council meeting for the month of December. City Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Sell. Councilmember Papalardo.
Here.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Here.
Mayor Chazé.
Here.
Vice Mayor Butlin.
Here.
Okay. Being the first meeting of the month, we have time for public participation on items not on the agenda, so I would invite Howard Gates to the mic. Name an address for the record, please.
Howard Gates, 34 Sunset Drive. I'm here after a little unfortunate incident two weeks ago. My dog is apparently a little smarter than me and apparently jumped and hit the gate latch and got outside. Immediately wanted to see the neighbors. Well, contact with a golf cart was made. This golf cart was on Shell Road in the dark, probably going 20, 25, 30 miles an hour, with no tag. My recollection of the law says that if the cart is on a road like Shell with a yellow line, it has to be tagged. People have to wear seat belts. That's not happening. I see it daily, a lot. And luckily, my dog just ran away and came back the next day, no problem. But sooner or later, somebody's gonna get hurt, or a dog's gonna get killed, or a cat. I'd like to see you guys try to talk to the cops and have some enforcement done, please. I mean, start giving people tickets and making them understand that this is a serious problem. People are abusing this golf cart privilege. Look, I'm not against carts. I have one. I have a permit. Sidewalk, 5, 10 miles an hour, whatever that is, that's great on Shell Road. But it's not being followed. The rules are not being followed. So would you please do something to get this under control before something really bad happens? Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, would you like to review what has been done thus far and what the plans are?
Well, we do periodic special enforcement for golf carts. We did some this summer, the spring and summer. We can do them again. We hire off-duty officers. We did nights and weekends for approximately eight weeks during that particular time. We can certainly continually do it on a continuous basis. I mean, they do it on a continuous basis. I know some of these vehicles might have a license plate, which is a DMV license plate. We do have some of those that are allowed on streets at 35 miles an hour.
I think that the commenter noted that. We have low-speed vehicles, and there's a whole state law.
Yes. So there are no tags on low-speed vehicles because they're on the street up to 35 miles an hour.
No permits. There are tags, but no permits.
Yeah. But yeah, we'll continue to do some enforcement, and we'll look at arranging with the Sheriff Department to do more.
Right. I did have a recap of numbers. I don't recall them from the enforcement actions. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. We have minutes from the special city council meeting of October 15, 2025, the city council meeting of November 5, 2025, and the special city council meeting of November 19, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the three meetings of October 15, November 5, and November 19.
Second.
Vice Mayor Butlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Papalardo.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
And I am a yes. Are there any additions, deletions, or amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, we will move on to new business. Agenda item number four, the Growth Management Department is requesting the city council approve Resolution Number 2025-23, adopting a facade grant program. City Attorney, would you read Resolution Number 2025-23?
Yes, Mayor. Resolution Number 2025-23, a resolution of the city council of the city of DeBarry, Florida, adopting the city of DeBarry facade improvement grant program, identifying program eligibility areas and funding sources, providing for program purpose, administration, and implementation, authorizing the city manager or designated to administer the program, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stephen Bappier, with Management Director, for those maybe watching on the live stream. We gave this presentation at the last city council meeting, but I'm just gonna go over it briefly again, and it's gonna incorporate the guidance which we received from the council from two weeks ago. Just a background, as many know in the room, in 2022, we set forth our five-year strategic initiatives program, and one of them was to do something with our facades, especially along the Village Center, to improve the appearance of the buildings and to maybe revitalize some growth that would be along the 1792 corridor. The program goals that we've established are to enhance the visual and curb appearance and presence, boost the local economy, increase property values, and the other items that we show on the projected slide. The real program vision and purpose is to support the facade site and landscaping improvements, with the focus area being in the Village Center overlay in the High Banks node. That is area along 1792, bounded on the south by Plantation Drive, and it terminates in the north at the Pine Meadow Drive area. And these would be grants up to $20,000 on a first-come, first-served basis and based on available funding that we have for the program. With every program, we did an initial study, very well done by Ms. Thomas and Jackie, our new planning tech. We looked at the focus area of the Village Center overlay, which I described earlier. It's highlighted in green on the screen, and also the High Banks node, which is highlighted in the cutout of the red area on the slide. We broke down the entire corridor. We're evaluating into different sectors, and we looked at the facades of every single structure we had along the corridor, and we gave them a rating. Some of them are very good, very active, very well maintained, and some of them would probably need more focus than other facade programs. But overall, we did an analysis of every single section we have along the route. These aren't every section, but it's just providing an illustrated example. This is more closer to the High Banks node, which breaks out a dense pattern of businesses of various time periods that they were constructed, and also various conditions of their facade. It kind of gives an overall scope of the problems that we're facing. We did some architectural renderings of an existing facade and what a facade improvement program could do, the building on the top and bottom of the same building, but with a little help from AI and computer help, we tried to illustrate how simple things like awnings, new doors, new windows, or maybe new paint could change the actual appearance of a building and make it more attractive to businesses and people who are shopping at those businesses. Also, we did a sample building in the High Banks node. Many of you are familiar with this building. It's by the Salted Goat, but it shows how fresh paint and new festations can make a very large difference, along with new awnings, signs, et cetera. Nothing too complex, but basically focusing entirely on the facade. We looked at some cost estimates of the program. Just some of the work you saw earlier on the last slide, a sample building with 100-foot frontage, doing some simple facade-type programs would be a total cost of about nearly $25,000 to implement things such as doors, windows, and paint and awnings. The program itself, we will begin the kickoff in concert with our other departments to put public notifications out on public media, which is very effective for the city, put out flyers, et cetera, to reach out to the businesses and let them know of the program. Potential study for evaluating the grants, well, it'll be an evaluation throughout the entire duration of the first year of the program. We'll look at, see if there's been any change to vacancies, any property values, increase in the target areas, business owner satisfaction through surveys. And with this data input, we'll see if there would need to be an adjustment to the program caps, expansion of eligibility, or even expansion of the geographical area if needed and warranted with available funds. What would we be looking at doing? Well, this is a kind of a laundry list of what things would be available, but there are things you think of for a front facade: exterior wall refurbishings, masonry, stucco, renovation, perhaps some city art committee-approved murals, site improvements such as ADA parking, restriping, or parking upgrades to make the outside of the area safer to our residents, and replacement of things such as non-conforming signs or non-conforming things on the building. What would not be eligible would be any work performed prior to granting a grant, roof replacement or repair, interior motivations not seen from the public right of way, non-acetic structural repairs, and renovations of non-conforming signs unless the sign is being brought into conformity through the action of the building permit. What has to happen? Applicant eligibility: applicants must have a business tax receipt, be current on all their, any permits they have, have no code violations or liens, and they must try to have the property, the property owner must consent or the property owners written consent if it's a tenant that's running a business out of that building. Eligible applicants, tax-exempt organizations, government-owned occupation of buildings, religious institutions, any businesses with, I'll say, any code violations, or any businesses or commercial property that is not currently within the state, local taxes, or has tax liens against the property. Also, any structures with non-conforming uses as per our land development regulations. It would be a match-type program, smaller-scale grants for single tenants, larger scale for multi-tenant or entire building improvements. The projected grant will be up to $20,000, and that would be a matching grant with the owner or tenant paying the $20,000, and we would reimburse that said amount expended. The process itself would run from January 1st to December 31st. Forms would be available online and physically at City Hall. Applications, we looked at having a committee and comparing them against each other, but first-come, first-served would be better for this type of program. We will have, I call it a microcommittee, I don't like using the word committee, but it's just city staff composed of Growth Management, Building, Finance, and Shari's group, too, will look at the applications to see if they're suitable and meet the criteria of the program. The review would be completed within 30 days. The committee could approve, approve with modifications, or deny the application if that does not meet the criteria of the established program. The decision would be final, but applicants could reapply the next cycle for additional funding if it's available. Upon approval, the city would grant an approval letter. The applicants must apply for their building permits, and then when the work is completed, project must be completed within 180 days, and then some middle of receipts for work done would be given to the city, and then we would reimburse a match up to the program Two-stage payments. Initial reimbursement of 50% could be given upfront, and then the remaining, the balance, would be given upon completion of the invoices, which I mentioned earlier. All things must be documented, and all receipts must be provided to the city, of course. So what's the next step? The next step, staff recommends you approve the Resolution 25-2023. If said approved tonight, we will announce the program to the business community and be prepared to give facade grants. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, is there any public participation?
No, ma'am, there is not.
Okay. Councilmember Papalardo, questions or comments?
Thank you. This is basically exactly what I've been hoping for. I really like where this has wound up, and I like that we will be reviewing the success of it through the different metrics, so thank you for putting this together.
Absolutely.
I think this has all the, I'm sorry, go ahead. Councilmember Stevenson.
Thank you. I think you covered pretty much everything we talked about. It looks like a good program. My only question is about the murals or public art where it says committee approval. Again, is that a staff committee or Gateway Arts Committee? Who's approving the art, murals?
I think it said.
Right, we have a committee that's already established for our Main Street.
Okay.
And it's on the Center of the Arts, Ms. Marilynne Thomas, who's in the room tonight. And forgive me if I'm forgetting somebody involved, Shari's involved with that, too. But there are people actually know architecture, art, things like that that are involved, along with city staff.
Okay, thank you.
So we use that same, I hate the word committee, but that same group would look at the mural and see if it's acceptable with DeBarry's themes, et cetera. Yeah.
Vice Mayor Butlin.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I have the 1,001 questions.
Okay.
My question is, number one, how many properties are we looking at and the funding for them? I know that some are gonna be 1,000, some are gonna be 20,000 if it's the whole shopping strip or whatever. I'd hate for us to have this program in place and have four people do it and everything else look crappy, without saying other words, and not getting it done. I mean, I don't know. Is there, how much funds do we have? Do we know?
We have a little over $200,000 that we've been saving for the last three or four years.
Stockpiling it, okay.
Unfortunately, you can't force people to change their facade. However, we're trying to encourage them to apply on a first-come, first-served basis. How many people are we gonna get done? It depends. Some people might do a $5,000 improvement, some might do a 10, some might even do 20. It all depends on what gets, what happens out there, et cetera, et cetera. If you get 10, $20,000 grants in a row, you're gonna, it's 10 people.
Yeah, 10 people. Then we have to get some more.
Yeah, we'll have to refund the BTR fund that we've been saving. So we only get about 30,000 a year in BTR revenues. Question is, do we suspend it, let it go for a couple of years, and then, you know, every two years, we'll start another grant program? We'll be able to determine after the first year whether to, whether or not we have enough money, or if there's not a whole lot of people applying, maybe we expand the geographical area. Those are options that we all discussed at the last meeting, so that at the end of one year, we'll be able to evaluate that. So it's, and I hate to use the word, it depends.
Yeah. And I have experience working with, when I worked at New Suburban Beach for the community redevelopment area, it seems like once someone applied, it was a catalyst, even though they had a larger funding stream, but they had a larger problem set.
Right.
If you go over there and you see their, if you see their beachside downtown, you see their Canal Street now, and what it looked like 10 years ago, it's night and day. You were scared to go down there 10 years ago. Now everybody goes there, ride the golf carts there and all that. So I think once it starts, I think it'll start. Like we explained, it has an evaluation period, and it'll see the effectiveness, say, this thing really is a bomb, it stinks, or hey, it takes off.
I just hate to have two people do it, and the neighbors next to them look shabby when they don't want to put their best foot forward.
And maybe, if I may, when the project gets done and grant has been completed and everything else, we celebrate that accomplishment by awarding them with some recognition for what they've done and the grants we received, and hopefully that will prompt other folks to apply once they get their, you know, once they see people actually completing their particular projects.
I'm looking forward to it, so I'm excited about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. Couple of things. Your slide says that with the five-year program in 2022, I was part of discussions about this in 2018. It's been a long time coming, and I'm really grateful for all the heavy lifting that your team has done, looking at every building and fleshing this program out. I do think, to the comments of some of the others here, that we'll live and learn, but that's what the first-year evaluation program is, and I do think that, yes, you could have two of four do something, but you're never gonna get anywhere if you don't start.
Right, I agree.
So those may be, particularly if we celebrate them, those may lead to motivation. The one question I had, and I can't find it in the handout, but it was on your screen. It was at the bottom of the screen, and it said, "non-conforming uses."
Right, so we do have.
Per the LDC regulations, structures with non-conforming uses. I have a question about this. For example, DeBarry Nursery could never exist where it does today under our code or even the previous code.
Correct.
It's a business that's been here for half a century, and the owners take great pride in it, and it looks lovely in our downtown. But if they wanted to further enhance it, are we saying that because they're a non-conforming use, we would not let them enhance their property?
That's correct. We have other uses, too. I mean, that is a kind of the heart of our community. I've gotten plants there. I like their rooster, all that. That's great. But we have used car lots that are here that are non-conforming.
Yeah, but we're saying that DeBarry Nursery could not apply.
As it's currently written.
And that would be because this nursery was started 50 years ago, has maintained a growing business, reflects well on DeBarry, and they keep a lovely property, and we're saying if they wanted to enhance, they would not be eligible. That one I have a little hard time with. What is, I would welcome input of the city manager or anyone else.
Well, I think one thing we could do, if there is a non-conforming use, and we do get a grant on a non-conforming use, we could amend.
Could come to the council?
We could amend the resolution to come to council.
I would appreciate that, because I don't think that we want to penalize someone that has invested in the community. Now, do I want to throw a canopy over the door to a used car lot and call it a day? I'm not so sure. So I'm happy to have it in here, but I would like there to be an exception program or clause where it could come for council review or something, because in that case, I think that saying, no, if you think of something that would make your place even more desirable in this strip, no, you may not apply, I have a problem with that, given their history within the city.
When you make the motion for the resolution, just that you approve the Resolution 2025-23 with an amended exception process established by staff for structures with non-conforming uses.
Okay.
Okay.
And I think that we can add that to the resolution.
Where we come back to council for that? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah. If it were DeBarry Nursery, I would not like to shut them out, and you know, that is a business that has benefited the city for half a century, and it is a beautiful business. And no, we would never allow a nursery in the middle of our city now. But it exists, and if they wanted to further enhance their facility, not moving anywhere, but further enhance it, I would not like to reward that kind of positive civic behavior by saying, no, not you, because you could never put one here again. Is there, would there be any objection or further discussion of that particular caveat?
Really brief comment is all.
Yes.
I think there's a lot of good intent behind omitting the non-conforming uses.
Right.
Because there's a certain sunset expected in some of those uses.
Yeah.
So a waiver of sorts, I agree with.
Yeah. Beverly and her husband, as far as I know, intend to continue operating that, as her parents did, and I like to treasure that rather than penalize it, but I understand that we wouldn't want to be spending city facade money, limited as it is, on certain kinds of facilities that where it would not really bring additional positive things to the city. Okay. I have no further comment.
Yeah, Mayor, on, sorry, on page 24 is the ineligible applicants. The last bullet there says, "Structures with non-conforming uses per our current land development regulations."
Right.
And then we just put there, "unless approved by council."
Unless approved by council. I'm happy with that.
And then, so when you do the motion, just as amended, Resolution 2025-23, approve their motion with the revision of, as discussed on council today.
If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion. Go ahead, Jim.
Motion to approve Resolution 2025-23, including the amendments as discussed regarding non-conforming uses with a city council approval.
Great. Second. Councilmember Papalardo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
And I am a yes. Moving on to agenda item number five, the city manager is requesting the city council approve a proposal in the amount of $305,400 from SAC Construction LLC of Apopka, Florida for stormwater pipe lining services to rehabilitate existing stormwater piping of the Glen Abbey subdivision and the Summer Haven subdivision. This proposed project is an initial phase of a comprehensive project known as the DeBarry Stormwater Infrastructure Collapse in Volusia Blue in Gemini Spring Shed Project that is funded from a grant of the Florida Legislature.
Good evening, Mayor Chazé.
Good evening.
My name is Kevin Hare, and my company is K-Hare Construction Services. The purpose of the project is to rehabilitate existing stormwater piping. The stormwater infrastructure of the Glen Abbey and Summer Haven neighborhoods was generally constructed using steel stormwater pipes about more than 30 years ago, and the majority of these pipes have been inspected and found to be corroded and have lost some of its structural capacity. This project proposes, and it's shown on the screen, the Glen Abbey project is shown on the screen, that's 1,305 feet of lining that crosses North Pine Meadow Drive and then extends on down and crosses Glen Club Drive as well. And then the Summer Haven project includes 295 feet of lining, and then it's pipes that cross underneath Summer Haven Drive, which is really arterial road for the neighborhood. SAC Construction Company is a national rebuild, pipe rehabilitation company with a local office in Apopka. They have extensive experience in this type of pipe lining. This is called cast-in-place pipe or CIPP lining. The existing stormwater pipes would have an extended, expected to have an extended life of more than 50 years. DeBarry City Council approved piggyback agreement with SAC Construction in October 15 of 2025, and the scope of services prioritizes the stormwater infrastructure that is most essential to the surrounding properties and the rights of way. My company, K-Hare Construction Services LLC, task order 1125-01, is attached for city council approval. The purpose of this task order is to establish a budget for construction management and inspection services for the project. The proposed budget amount is not to exceed $15,080. The proposed, proposed budget amount is not to exceed $15,080. Funding for the project is, for the, shall be drawn from a $750,000 grant from the Florida Legislature that is budgeted from the stormwater fund. That it is recommended that city council approve the proposal from SAC Construction Company in the amount of $300,540 for stormwater pipe lining services to rehabilitate existing stormwater piping of the Glen Abbey subdivision and Summer Haven subdivision with grant funding from the larger Florida Legislature as an overall project known as the DeBarry Stormwater Infrastructure Collapse in Volusia Blue and Gemini Spring Shed Project. It's further recommended that city council approve a contingency budget of 5% or $15,027 to be included for a total budgeted amount of $315,567. It is recommended city council approve work order 1125-01 in the amount of $15,080 to K-Hare Construction Services LLC for construction management and inspection services as related to the SAC Construction Proposal for the Glen Abbey subdivision and some, Summer Haven subdivision stormwater pipe rehabilitation project. SAC is expected to schedule this work for early spring, sometime in, by February or so. We expect the work to be done. With that, I would answer any questions you may have.
City clerk, do we have any public participation?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Councilmember Papalardo, questions, comments?
No comments, thank you.
Councilmember Stevenson?
No questions, thank you.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
It's about time we're doing this.
I agree.
It's been like on this list forever. I have nothing further on it.
No, happy to start it.
Yeah.
If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal for the amount of $300,540 for SAC Construction LLC for stormwater pipe lining services to rehabilitate existing stormwater piping of the Glen Abbey subdivision and the Summer Haven subdivision with grant funding from the Florida Legislature for an overall project known as the DeBarry Stormwater Infrastructure Collapse in Volusia Blue and Gemini Spring Shed Project. It is recommended the council approve the budget of 5% for $15,027 to be included in the total amount of $315,567. It is also recommended that we approve the work order number 1125-01 in the amount of $15,080 to K-Hare Construction Services LLC for construction management and inspection services as related to the attached SAC Construction LLC proposal for the Glen Abbey subdivision and Summer Haven subdivision stormwater pipe rehabilitation program.
Second.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Papalardo?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Moving on to agenda item number six, the city manager is requesting the city council approve a proposal in the amount of $64,132 from SAC Construction LLC of Apopka, Florida, for stormwater pipe lining services to rehabilitate an existing six-foot diameter stormpipe of the Fort Florida Road Stormwater Infrastructure System.
Good evening again, Mayor Chazé. For the record, my name is Kevin Hare, K-Hare Construction Services. Purpose of this project is to rehabilitate an existing stormwater pipe that crosses under Fort Florida Road. The existing corrugated steel pipe is six foot in diameter. This existing pipe is corroded, and it must be rehabilitated to maintain its structural Again, SAC Construction Company is a national rehabilitation company. They have extensive experience with this type of lining, which is a large diameter pipe, and they have the capability of doing so. And as, this lining is expected to extend the life of that pipe for another 50 years. DeBarry City Council approved the piggyback agreement with SAC Construction in October 15 of 2025. The project is recommended as a priority to complete this work during the period when Fort Florida Road is closed for the bridge replacement project. So, we're trying to coordinate all these projects to be done while that, while the road is closed. K-Hare Construction Services Task Order 1125-02 for construction management services is attached for city council approval. The proposed budget amount is not to exceed $4,060. Funding for the proposed lining project shall be drawn from the stormwater fund. That it is recommended that city council approve a proposal in the amount of $64,132 from SAC Construction LLC for stormwater pipe lining services to rehabilitate one six-foot diameter stormpipe on Fort Florida Road. It is recommended that city council include a contingency budget of 8% or $5,130 to be included for a total budget amount of $69,262. It is recommended the city council approve work order 1125-02 in the amount of $4,060 to K-Hare Construction Services LLC for construction management and inspection services as related to the attached SAC proposal for the Fort Florida Road six-foot diameter stormwater pipe rehabilitation project. And again, and this is expected to be done by springtime, sometime while the road is closed. And I would answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. City clerk, do we have any public participation?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Councilmember Papalardo, questions or comments?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Stevenson?
No questions, thank you.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Thank you for doing it while the road is closed already, because that could have been a big problem. No, that's it for me, thank you.
Yes. My only comment is, I think I saw on social media that the problem with pipe under this road has to do with overdevelopment and flooding. I found that humorous. I have no further questions. If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the proposal in the amount of $64,132 from SAC Construction for stormwater pipe lining services on Fort Florida Road, as well as the contingency budget of 8% or $5,130 to be included for a total budget amount of $69,262, and work order number 1,125-02, the amount of $4,060 to K-Hare Construction Services for construction management and inspection services related to the attached project.
Second. Councilmember Papalardo?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Agenda item number seven, the staff is requesting the city council discuss and approve a change in the city manager's compensation structure and authorize the city attorney to prepare any revisions to the city manager contract and the human resource director to prepare any documents required to update the 401A retirement plan, if necessary, for final approval and execution at a future city council meeting.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Wendy Cullen, Human Resource Director. And as you are aware, two weeks ago, when I was here with the health insurance program, we discussed the conundrum we have currently regarding the city manager's life insurance. His contract requires the city to provide him with two times his annual salary in life insurance, which is approximately $454,000 worth of life insurance, which we are unable to get our current, or our brand-new carrier to write. That, and the fact that he is over the age of 65 years old, means that his life insurance is decreasing as he continues to-
Get older.
Thank you for not making me say that. So, two weeks ago, we discussed that there might be a couple of options that we could consider in order to correct Mr. Rosamonda's contract and, and bring some sort of resolution to the, the problem. And so, I did explore three different options. The first was to get a term life insurance policy in the amount of life insurance required under contract through either an independent broker or our current broker. The cost to that is about $4,466, $4,500, and that amount of money, the $4,600, would be taxable to the city manager. The second option that I discussed with the city manager was the idea that as his life insurance, as our ability to provide him with life insurance continues to decrease, that maybe we could compensate him in other manners or modes. And so, we came up with an option two, which each year, as we enter renewal and negotiate our contract with the health insurance program, should we be able to get life insurance for Mr. Rosamonda in the amount required, that he, we would alter his 401 contribution. So, we will, unlikely to get him the amount of life insurance by the current contract, so we decided that an option could be, if he chooses to enroll in our life insurance program at whatever level of life insurance we can get for him maximum, under our current contracts, we would increase his 401 contribution by 2% over what we do now. All employees currently get 10%, and so, that 2% would actually, would, would be intended to offset the fact that we could not provide him with the life insurance. If he totally declines the, the voluntary life insurance and only goes with the $50,000 that we provide everybody, then we would make a 14% contribution to his 401 to offset that cost. The third option that we explored was to explore the issue of potentially getting him a long-term care policy. I didn't get any official quotes, because Mr. Rosamonda has his, let's just say it's personal information that would have to be disclosed in order to achieve that end, and I believe Mr. Rosamonda has determined that the, the cost would be prohibitive, as that would be taxable to him.
Yeah, that, the insurance broker that I was working with, Universal Life and Life Care, is 25 to 30,000 annually. So, apparently, I'm just way too old, so.
And we hope you continue to get much older.
Yes.
In conversation and developing this agenda item with the city manager, we have decided, or the feeling is, is that option two provides the greatest flexibility for the city manager and the city in order to make his compensation structure acceptable. And so, with that, I would entertain any questions, comments, and direction.
Thank you. City clerk, do we have any public participation?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Councilmember Papalardo?
I'm thinking of pulling these proposals together. I would say it's not particularly surprising, the math that has been laid out, the premiums are just, they don't make a lot of sense. I don't really have any questions here. I think number two does make sense for the most part. I don't want this to become a standard for ongoing future city managers, I don't think that makes sense. I think we have a one-off kind of situation here, so that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevenson?
Thank you. I appreciate you going through all this effort to make sure that we're meeting our obligations, and I'm happy with the choice, number two, since that's what you guys like also.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Thank you, Mayor. I am also happy with option number two, and I know that I've talked with the city manager several times, going back and forth, and I've priced it myself, and it's a little bit crazy out there, and I'm not as old as the city manager.
It is something to look forward to, I'm sure.
I'm, yes, but I'm happy with option number two, if that's okay with everyone across the board. I think it's the best option we have right now, and as long as we don't make it precedent that, like we said, a new city manager coming in, they start where we started our city manager now.
I would believe that any, should we ever require the services of another city manager, that that would be an independent and new negotiating point of reference, depending on what the council chooses and what is important to that individual when the time comes.
That's it for me.
I think that number two is an acceptable way out. I did do sort of a double clutch. If, if it's $900 for this, the amount of life insurance that we currently get, and if he foregoes that, he can get 2% more, that's 902% or not the same number. I'm not sure how that could be tweaked, or if it should be tweaked, but I just note that there is actually built-in sort of an incentive for him to go with the retirement if he is not concerned about rolling the dice on leaving his family abruptly in the next year.
And I believe Mr. Rosamonda and I, when we discussed that, the, the fact is, is that we cannot provide, you know, almost a half a million dollars, $454,000 in life insurance, and as the salary continues to go up. $2,000 incrementally, basically, per 1% of his salary into a 401 is, it will take many, many years to achieve whatever that dollar figure is, would he, unfortunately, if he passed while he was in the service of the city.
Retirement funds are not going to replace a term life in policy. Term life is going to be a low-dollar investment for high payoff if you die. If you don't, it's all money spent with no benefit. What I'm saying is the difference between the 12% and the 14%.
Oh, correct, yes.
It is that incentive, which is over $2,000, and at current cost to the city, is a $900 benefit. So, we're taking a $900 benefit and translating it into a $2,200 benefit, but the difference is that the $2,200 benefit is $2,200 that will benefit him and his family in his retirement. If he dies, they have no life insurance, other than the $50,000 that every employee has.
That's correct.
That is the trade-off. I just wanted to highlight that I, that, that we are not unaware of the fact that 2, that 2% is more, if he foregoes, is more than what the cost to the city would have been for like term life insurance that is available to the city to provide. So, but the difference is, because we're not doing apples and apples, we're making a, a solution out of apples and pears, that it isn't a dollar-for-dollar equivalent. And I just wanted that noticed for, for our residents, that we do look at these things critically, so we're finding an acceptable way out of a situation that none of us is responsible for, but we all have an ethical responsibility to, to do the right thing. So, I have no problem with-
Mayor, our strategy here, if I may-
Yeah.
Is to, y'all approve option number two-
Yes.
Then I will work with our city attorney to do an amendment to the contract-
Right.
That describes option two-
Yes.
And then bring that back to the council for, for you to approve the contract.
Correct. But I, the math, I would just wanted to highlight the fact that, that we are not unaware of this, if there are people watching, that, because we're doing an apples-and-pears solution, it is not a dollar-for-dollar trade-off. I would entertain a motion if there's no further discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve the change in the city manager's compensation structure and authorize the city attorney to prepare any revisions to the city manager's contract, and then human resource director to prepare any documents requiring to update the 401A retirement plan, if necessary, for the final approval and execution of future city council meeting.
Choosing, choosing option number two.
Choosing option number two.
Second.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Papalardo?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Thank you.
We are moving on to agenda item number eight. The Growth Management Department is requesting the city council review, discuss, and provide guidance for the proposed land bank program.
Thank you very much, Stephen Baff, Growth Management Director, once again. A little background, as many are aware in the room, but perhaps some watching online may not know, DeBarry is nearing its build-out, and there's a lot more pressure to manage remaining undeveloped or underdeveloped properties we have in the city. And the city is also facing, unfortunately, very strong property rights in Florida, which do not allow us to readily change the densities and intensities of properties which have been vested for over 30 years. Also, in today's environment, we do face actions from the state legislative bodies that are out of our control, which could impact our ability to continue strong home rule within the city of DeBarry. We were pretty forward-looking in purchasing some properties over the last three years. On this slide illustrates just three sample properties of our larger purchases, on Palm Drive, Alexander Island, and the Toms Mason Properties, also known to some people as Old Carson Properties. Now, these properties do total 229 acres for an investment from the city of $4,715,500. Now, what do we do with land that we have or may be projected to have? There's been discussion in the past from the council, and to have a land bank program for these properties we have under our control, and for the benefit of the residents. The method of running this program could involve a restricted fund, additional ad valorem millage, or other grant funding opportunities. The land bank program would be processed as a referendum vote on the next election in November of 2026, and further program refinement would happen during initial workshop sessions, session, recessions in the early part of 2026. Really, the land bank is an umbrella over really three classification of uses. One would be preservation. Simply put, preservation is keeping a property in its natural or existing state. Possible uses- Possible uses could be something as a passive park, a dog park, or similar low-impact use. If you think of Alexander Island or the majority of Alexander Island, that would be an example of preservation. We also have what's called conservation. Conservation would be establishing conservation easements on given portions of our properties in exchange for other conservation lands. An example could be using a portion of the Palm Road property, which could be used as a conservation easement for the management of stormwater onsite or other locations. Another aspect of the land bank program could focus on redevelopment. This could happen with the city purchasing and abandoning or neglected property. The city would have the right to resell the property at a market value for a type of project desired to support the city's vision. The timeline itself is entertaining, bringing forward tonight would be in January 2026, have some sort of public announcement program kickoff. We strongly recommend having a council workshop to flesh out some of the details of the program in the spring of 2026, and then have a referendum, excuse me, a resolution or ordinance establishing this program as a referendum item. It'd actually be an ordinance, not a resolution. I apologize for that. This referendum would be submitted to the Volusia County Supervisors of Elections in June of 2026, to appear on the program on November 3, 2026, as a referendum vote for the citizens of DeBery to determine. If so passed, January 2027, we would effectively start the program. And then by January 2030, we would have an evaluation, very similar to the mobility plan, where we have an evaluation period of the program itself, would be due by the end of the three-year period. What SIF is looking for is maybe some guidance on our timeline, anything you want to have initially in the program itself that we can bring forward to a later council workshop, if so determined to push forward. So. And if you do want to proceed with the program, we will follow our prescribed timeline and implement any council guidance we have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk, do we have any public participation?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Councilmember Papalardo?
Thank you.
Do you have something to say about this?
Always.
Do you have a PowerPoint, is my question?
Well, my deck is in the full agenda.
In the agenda packet, yes.
So we did like a little bit of groundwork on this a handful of months ago. I don't remember how long ago that presentation was. And we kind of threw out some of the ideas. And just to kind of recap, what I recall of the, where we landed and a little bit of my opinion on there is, one, the restricted fund, I think, is a non-starter. I think that's very important. Number two is that the length, the term of this, do we want to seek a four-year rolling term, or do you want to do a 12-year flat term, or any other type of term? I think we were liking the four-year term, if I recall. Second was the funding scale. I think we liked the low language of setting a minimum ad valorem millage, something to the tune of 0.2 to 0.5. It could be a little bit on the lower side. I think we did not like the zero up to a point like Echo and Volusia Forever is, because that could enable for future councils to basically nullify it. And if the people vote for it, then that should probably exist for the term of it. It shouldn't be able to politically be reduced to zero for not a whole lot of purpose. I really like the three strategies for property. The preservation is excellent. The conservation is excellent. And the redevelopment is a great third opportunity. You look around town, you can probably picture some of the redevelopment ideas that I'm coming up with right now. There's a big ugly one in the middle of town. And, you know, so I think this has, the proposal as set forth in the agenda right now has almost all of the factors that I feel like we were leaning towards. I don't have anything materially different to propose here. And I'm very pleased with the timeline. I thought we were going to be pressed a little bit earlier than June, but if that's how long we have, we have plenty of time to make sure this is tidy with...
To do this right.
But public participation on it, I think that's important. And that's a good development. So that's everything. Thank you for pulling this together so far.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
What, when you talk about four-year rollover, what does that specifically mean? Does that mean going back for revote?
Yes.
Going back for a revote?
Yes.
Okay.
That was at least what I had proposed in there. And it seemed like there was, please chime in later, but I think that's where we were leaning towards. But I don't think the set in stone longer terms are bad either. I don't suppose it's a bad idea that we could discuss voting for the first four years, then it can be legislative to make it the next, every four-year interval. I don't know if that would be better, because if the people are voting on it, and we're going to have a good staff review, perhaps that is a better in-between, is that four years, council from now would be able to legislatively roll it instead of going out for another vote. That may be a bit overdone to continually seek...
Well, every year, as I visualize, it comes to council during the budget particular process, this will be set, the rate will be set by the council, whether it be 0.2, 0.3, 0.4, or something in between. So every year, it's going to come to council for a specific legislative action.
Right.
And whether to renew or not, you know, you can put that factor in there, maybe, and I'm just a suggestion, have it the same length as charter reviews. You know, charter reviews are every eight years.
Seven.
Seven years. And so make it an even number, this way you don't have to do any special elections. But again, it might be an option that you could kind of marry up that, rather than every four years, because the money accumulation...
May not be useful until then.
...to do anything with. Because if you go 0.2 to start off with, the money accumulation may not be enough there to buy certain properties that you want to conserve and prevent development.
Agreed.
So those are some things to consider. We'll try to put some better numbers together so that we can show how that stretches over four, eight, 12 years. I know we do have some numbers in here, but on how you can make those decisions, and then what period we pick, whether we're going to make a legislative rollover or a vote rollover. I would recommend a legislative rollover.
Yeah. Thank you for those comments, because I kind of like the eight-year kind of every two full election cycles. I think that makes a lot of sense. It's enough time to establish something and actually make action before it's up again. But I also like it having to be reinstituted, whether legislatively or via vote, because I feel like it should have the opportunity, just it just kind of laps, if that's what the stakeholders feel is right.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying about the length of the terms as well. I wasn't sure what that was. I would lean towards having it be a council decision. I feel like four years is a little short. Eight or 12 years, I think, would be fine if we're making it a legislative with the council's decision. As far as the millage range, the 0.2 is the minimum to 0.5 maximum, as good as, like you said, you don't go down to zero and essentially eliminate the program. And as far as, I don't know, the name preference, I think DeBery Forever, I like better.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Butlin?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree, going to eight years, I think, is smarter than seven-year review. We also don't know legislatively what could happen in the next year, three years, eight years, 10 years. So having a handle on it where it can be reviewed and updated to the statutes and laws that change accordingly, things are changing all the time. And being on an advocacy committee with the state, it's certainly not going to be a surprise if something changes, whether it's our favor or not. But I like it. I think it's great. I think it's something that no other city is doing right now. Is any other city in the Volusia doing this?
I do not recall.
I don't, we were ever hearing a land bank.
I don't believe so. I've kind of socialized it through a few League of Cities meetings, and everyone's like, what's a land bank?
What's a land bank?
What's that? So I got residents asking what a land bank means, you know, basically. And I'm explaining to them, we're buying, you know, so we can control it. So I like it. I think it's great. I think it's a good program to start. We're at a good starting point to do it, and I think it's a go-ahead for me.
Good. I'm very supportive of this. I have a couple of thoughts, sort of marrying some of what's been said and what was in the presentation. For example, the staff is proposing a three-year review. That's good, because if we have a four-year renewal, we want the review to be done in time for us to plan and act. This isn't something you would do on the spur of the moment, the third week of August. So a three-year review would set the stage for the work that the council elected at the time is going to do in that fourth year. I do think that we will get more citizen confidence if it's, I would say, no longer than eight years. And if we did a seven-year review before a citizen vote again, that's, I think that's why we have a seven-year review for charter. So then you do the charter review, and then you get the things on the ballot in that eighth year. And the eighth year, you have an election, you're not running a special election. So there, this could fit together very nicely, sort of in the same way that the charter review does. I do like the idea that we propose the minimum terms and millage, that we propose that there be administrative, that there be legislative decisions for up to, say, I would say, eight years. I'm a little bit concerned about casting this as DeBery Forever because of color from Volusia Forever and Florida Forever, public perception. And some of the public perception is strongly positive. Some of the public perception is, as implemented, it's been problematic in certain circumstances. So I wouldn't want that to sort of color our program, which I see as innovative. And thank you so much, Councilmember Papalardo, for your proposal and all your work on this over the years. So I would sort of lean to letting it be a different name, DeBery Land Bank, because it would divorce it from whatever is going on with Volusia Echo, Volusia Forever, whether or not the state should buy beach property in the Panhandle for X-whatever price, some things that have had negative public impressions. And I just don't think we need that baggage. But I would encourage us to keep open to ideas that we might get in the workshop, interacting with our residents, not to set this whole program sort of, here it is, 95% done, folks. You have a right to say something about the last 5%. If we really want them to feel that this is they, the people, deciding, the time is to act is now, before we lose rights to these lands because of development, then we need to be open to they're bringing something to the table that is a good idea as well. So I really think we're on the right, we're on the right plan here, that we have a lot of agreement, that we have strong support for it amongst ourselves. I strongly support a robust workshop with a lot of promotion in the community to get ideas. And we need to have a framework, which we really do have now after all this work by so many people. But I do think we need to be open to some good ideas coming out of the workshop that may not originate just with us. So that would just be my thoughts on it. And if there's, yes, Councilmember Papalardo?
I have one thought that, well, first, I think we kind of, in our last discussion, we kind of crossed out DeBery Forever from the, what I recall. I'm not super fond of Volusia Forever either. Then the other concept, which is kind of on everybody's mind, is should there be language, and a city attorney maybe will help, that we could tack on there that it could be ad valorem, or perhaps non-ad valorem? Because if there is certain developments in the state legislature that prohibits from certain types of ad valorem collection...
Levies, yes.
Should we give ourselves an out to enable us to say, okay, it could be 0.2 to 0.5 millards, or no grade between $50 and $120 per annual?
Right.
Is that such a language that may be added?
Sure.
Is that, okay, I didn't know if that was...
That's a good idea, because we don't know where the restructuring of taxation is going to end up.
And perhaps in a workshop, the people like, everyone pays $50.
And maybe, and that's why I say, I think we ought to be open to people saying, I don't want it linked to the value of my house, but I'd be willing to have $50 added to my tax bill. That would be a valuable thing as well, and that might be a way to do this. So I think we really have the shape of it. Is there anything that you need as you move forward, other than what we've discussed here, city manager or staff?
The input you gave is excellent. We'll look at a workshop soonest, probably end of January, beginning of February. Well-advertised, well-crafted, to get as many seats filled here as we can.
And some detail about it.
Right.
And I know you liked Forever, but you're fine with Land Bank? I really think it makes, you know, we have done a lot of things in DeBery that I think have been innovative. And having it have a different name that doesn't have a connector to programs that have had champions and detractors, to me, is appealing. So if somebody thinks Land Bank isn't it, but it's another two words that aren't Forever, I'm good with that, too, but I think Land Bank is fine.
And just, Mayor, if you don't mind, you also have redevelopment in here, so that's really not a Forever program. And yes, there have been some questionable decisions made for those, these particular programs in the past with other governments. But yeah, I think DeBery Land Bank is an innovative approach that has a nice rhyme to it, and I think it covers all three spectrums that we want to cover.
Correct.
And so I would avoid the Forever name, because I think it's been issues.
Right. And as it deals with redevelopment, I would like us to emphasize the conditions of the property we consider for redevelopment. I think that there is some, my way of thinking, rightful resistance to the city becoming a real estate agent for the sake of real estate profits that they can foresee. In fact, it's what rubbed me wrong about certain school board discussions. It was as if investing in land because we think we got it cheaper than the market could bear, and we could make a profit. But that's not the mission, in my way of thinking, of the school board. Similarly, I don't think it's the mission of the city to figure out slam dunk land transactions that can create a profit for the city. That's not what this is about. So we need to be very clear about the conditions of, if it's about redevelopment, it's the condition of the property that's not being addressed by the private market and our normal, encouraged, private market forces. And the city can, through this project, through this program, bring about something positive that isn't the city investing in owning it long-term. It's turning it into something that is within the vision of the residents and the city. So with that, unless there's further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
We don't need a motion.
Oh, we don't need a motion. We've discussed it.
That's it.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. So we move on to reports and communications. Councilmember Papalardo?
I have no reports. Hope everybody had a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevenson?
Nothing to report. I look forward to seeing everybody at the Christmas tree lighting on Saturday.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I'm reporting on is I went to the Rotary Dinner with you.
Yeah.
We were there together that night with the Veterans Celebration, and it was fun. It was interesting. The dancing was certainly had by all those couples out there, so we had fun. That was it for me.
Okay. I met with the West Volusia Realtors Government Liaison and a representative of the local West Volusia Board. And we talked about the city's outlook and opportunities for cooperation. And I believe that Sherri Simmons is going to remain in contact with them going forward to see if there are areas... to see if there are areas where they may be supportive of us and vice versa. I did attend the meal for veterans that was hosted by Rotary at the VFW. Good time was had by all. And I am looking forward to the chili cook-off, the tree lighting, and the parade, the first two this Saturday night, and the next, the following Sunday. So city manager, anything to report?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Legal.
No report, Mayor. Council, thank you.
We stand adjourned.